Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, July 15. We're at the Westminster Center School. And it is 6:03 PM. I'd like to call the reorganization meeting of the Westminster School Board to order. It's time. Do I have any adjustments to the agenda? None? Okay. Communication and public comment? Is there anyone in the public or here in the room who wishes to address the school board? Just unmute yourself if you're on Zoom. Near the room, just speak up.
Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Breyer.
As a member of the public, because I'm not a member of the Westminster School Board, I want to step in front of anybody else and just congratulate our colleagues in Westminster. You, it's been a long fight. And how's it feel to be a winner, everybody?
Pretty special. Thank you, Mr. Breyer. I do not see any other hands raised in, on Zoom or in the room. So at this time, I'm going to move on to reorganization of the board. This time, I'd like to ask for any nominations for the next board chair of the Westminster School Board.
I think I'd like to nominate Charlie.
Chair?
No?
You're making excellent chair from what I might say.
Except that I have done, I was hoping that I would take something like the top. And my stores that way.
All right.
That's okay. I'll take over something.
But there's a nomination.
There's a nomination for Cheryl.
Nomination for Cheryl Charles. Is there any more nominations for board chair? If none, as superintendent, I'd like to cast any conversation on the topic.
We already had it.
Okay, if not, I will cast one ballot for Cheryl Charles to be the next chairperson of the Westminster School Board. Robert knows we've got our small board, we don't need a second, but all in favor?
Aye.
Cheryl Charles is the next board chair of the Westminster School Board. Congratulations. And next up on the agenda for you is the election of a vice chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody. I am willing to serve in this role as we move into the next phase. Westminster once again being relocated as a school. I'd like to entertain a motion to elect a vice chair.
I'm going to nominate you, Charlie, as vice chair. Simply because I am also, I found myself as town moderator and I don't want to be in a position where I have to voice in the middle of town meetings and then have to step in.
Except.
Are there any other nominations for the role of vice chair? Hearing none, I think I don't cast one ballot. I think I asked us all to vote. So let me ask people to indicate by saying aye if they approve.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Unanimously electing Charlie Hutcheson as vice chair. And thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Now, we do need a clerk. So we now have a need to entertain a motion for the role of clerk of the Westminster School Board. And that person is responsible for making sure that minutes are in file. We don't write the minutes, but we make sure all the documentation is in place. So I wonder if we have a nomination for.
Nominate myself for that if I'm allowed to have two roles.
I'm not sure. I think you can.
Sounds like most substantial for the vice chair. We'll do an inspection.
Okay, thank you. All righty. So we have a nomination for Charlie Hutcheson in the role of clerk of the Westminster School. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed unanimously? And thank you, Charlie, for your willingness to serve in that role. The next topic on the agenda is to set the time, the date, and the location of regular monthly school board meetings. And I think it's, you know, it is the case, and I'd say this to the general public who's listening tonight, that the Westminster School Board has been reinstated conditionally by the State Board of Education. So we've had a number of requirements to meet. Electing Officer Chine is one of those. But this board will not have full responsibility for the matters of the Westminster schools until July 1, 2022. There are specific things we need to do, working collaboratively with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District in the interim. And so it's my proposal for consideration by other board members that we set our time and date to be the same time and date as the meetings of the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District. And those meetings are held on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, with the second Thursday being optional. It's, we only hold it if a meeting is needed. The regular meeting is the fourth Thursday of each month. And without establishing location at this moment, I'd recommend that we consider a motion to hold our meetings jointly for an unspecified period of time with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District. Cheryl, did you say fourth or third Tuesday? Second and fourth? Second and fourth, thank you. Second and fourth. Are the, are the regular dates with the fourth Thursday being the one? I think I'm right about that, Mr. Breyer. So I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So I'll move to that we hold our regular monthly meeting on the fourth Thursday evening of each month at locations to be specified.
Okay.
And Robert, the other one? From the, from the, Robert's, how are we appropriating the second Thursday of the month? Is the option?
No, it's the, oh.
Was it an option to have two meetings in a month? Or an option to switch from one to?
Option to have two meetings in a month. David just moved that our regular meeting would be on the fourth Thursday, which is established a motion, which would just the regular meeting time. And so that's quite appropriate. That puts us on a monthly meeting schedule, meeting only on the fourth Thursday of each month with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District. That would, which would be their regular meeting and therefore our once a month regular meeting. So that's the motion on the floor. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that is approved. And with respect to location, we have previously alternated between Crafton School and the Westminster School. I'm not, I'm not sure what the pleasure of Athens and Crafton is. Maybe we could hold that for discussion in our joint meeting with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School Board. I don't think we have to decide that at this, at this moment. So we'll waive that decision. And the, the, the next requirement of this particular meeting is to establish the newspaper to be used to announce school board functions and activities. And historically, I think that's been the reformer that is the newspaper that the supervisory union uses. So I entertain a motion that we identify or establish the reformer to be the newspaper record to announce Westminster School Board functions.
So moved.
Thank you.
Want to repeat it?
No, no need, I think. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's done. The next item on our agenda, this being the first organizational meeting of the newly reinstated Westminster School Board, is some committee assignments that are listed as optional. There are two here. Again, I would say for the public that this board is to comply with the law having been given to us or stated to us by the State Board of Education. We're to work on a financial agreement with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District about the separation of Westminster from that Union Elementary School District, to work on the finances. And secondly, we're to work jointly with the Union School District to establish the budget for the coming school year. We don't have other formal duties and responsibilities at this time. And we do not until July 1, 2022. However, committee assignments continue, you know, we are operating and we have no reason to believe that we won't continue to be active participants and members of those of the Northeast Union Supervisory Union. Whatever that is. I live right here. But at any rate, there are committees. And I think the two that are listed here, Budget and Finance, Teacher and Support Staff Negotiation. I think with Budget and Finance, we have historically as boards operated as a committee of the whole, which means that all of us would participate in those meetings. And for that, that particular assignment, I'd recommend that we establish a motion that will all be pulled to service. Okay. So David Major has moved that the Westminster School Board serve as a committee of the whole on matters related to Budget and Finance. With respect to teacher and support staff negotiations. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. With respect to the Budget and Finance Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With respect to the next topic, thank you, teacher and support staff, I've actually been serving in that role for the last couple years. And there's, you know, some question legally about Westminster actually having a seat there because Westminster is part of the Northeast Union Elementary School District. I think I would just say that I'm willing to continue to be in that role in some kind of advisory or participatory role, depending on the board's character and size. I don't think we need to take action with that decision to them.
That's very generous of you, Cheryl.
And then I think the last item before we go into a joint session with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District is that this board would adopt Robert's rules of order for small boards. First to point, Chris may have a little while ago with a small board, we don't even have a second motion. But I entertain a motion if we adopt Robert's rules of order for small boards.
Moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, we are ready and able to go into a joint session with the Northeast Union Elementary School.
Hello, everybody. Actually, Cheryl, I'm going to say, we have to convene the Windham Northeast Union Elementary District's Board to order and just do our, a couple items here. And then we will absolutely do the same thing. I, so with your, with your gracious understanding, where I'd like to call the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District Board to order at 6:18 is what I have PM. And it is being held at the Westminster Center School. Now, I'm hoping everyone has the agenda, either virtually or otherwise. Are there any adjustments to it or questions about what's on it that we need to address before we go further? Hearing that welcome sound of silence, we'll move on. Communications and public comment, are there any? I do see some non-members, at least I saw one non-member in our, online. Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask or say? Apparently, everyone's incredibly polite or reluctant. Item four, this is the painful one for me. It is resignation and replacement of member. We've been advised, and kind of knew this, that one can't serve two masters at once. And even though I'd like to pretend otherwise, that means that Cheryl Charles has indicated to me, unless she's changed her mind, that she was planning on resigning that evening. Is that still the case? You're going to hang in with us for a few minutes more?
Well, I'll always hang in with this group with my pleasure. And it's on the advice of council to the Union Elementary School District that now having been elected to the Westminster County School Board, even though it's a conditional school board, yes, I will resign. I'm warily resigning from the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District. And again, I will say, you guys have heard me say this all along, it's absolutely been a pleasure to work with our, our friends and colleagues from Athens and Crafton. It will continue to be, we're not disappearing. I'm just resigning from my role on this board in order to serve now the chair of the Westminster.
This is really a plot to get more members involved in the joint committee on West, from Westminster. We're all in favor of that. So I would, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Cheryl Charles, the member of the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School Board with regret. If anyone would like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And since we do operate under, under the small board rules, no second is needed. Is there anyone like to comment on this or make an inappropriate joke? All right, then I'm going to do the roll. Ginger?
Yes, I agree.
Lynn?
Yes.
Is Jessa with us this evening?
I am here and I vote yes.
All right. Is there, that everybody, oh, do we have, do we have anybody else? No, I guess not. I don't see anybody. All right. Um, second part of this is replacement of member. And I have an indication that our old friend Elise Manning, I hope that doesn't insult anybody by calling you an old friend, Elise, would, would be willing to serve a sentence on our Union Elementary School Board until such time as the, the Westminster Board is fully fledged. Are you still, still willing to do that despite what you've heard so far tonight?
Yes, I am certainly willing to join you. It's, be an honor.
Now, so I'll be entertaining a motion from our colleagues to that effect. And I, and should the motion prevail, Elise, you'll have to, you'll have to do the, the thing, the pledge of, I forget what it's called now, citizen's oath. What is it called? David, do you remember?
Oath of office.
What's that? It's a fancier term than that. But whatever, Freeman's oath, but it's called a Freeman's oath. So I'll anticipate you'll do that and get that signed with your, with your town clerk. So again, I'm entertaining a motion to welcome Elise Manning as a member from Crafton for the Windham Northeast Unified Elementary School District. Somebody, do you like to make that motion?
From Westminster.
From Westminster, yes. She belongs to all of us. Any discussion? Sounds of silence. Roll call. Ginger?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes, although I think the chair can just appoint a person, can they not?
No, no, for this, you have, this is a, this has to be a board adoption. And there's actually some question about whether it would normally be a town recommendation and board adoption. But I think that we're, we're plowing ahead here and hopefully nobody's going to object.
Please adopt.
All right. So we're all good. Well, Elise, welcome.
Jack, can I interrupt for one moment?
Yes, please, please.
David Major, just to say that the, last night I was at the Westminster Select Board meeting and they, on the advice of council, voiced their approval or voted for Elise's, Elise's appointment to the unified board. Because council was unsure, there really isn't a law apparently that designates this interim world we're in. So, so he advised the select board to weigh in and they did.
I also believe proceeding with a great deal of confidence will substitute brilliantly for actual information. And that's kind of how we're going. All right, thank you. All right. So we now have a new member and, but I will remind Elise that until she's sworn in officially, she is a participant in name and cannot vote, though I certainly would like her opinion if there's anything coming up. Now, with the resignation of Cheryl, we have, and happily me, as a member of the, of our board's negotiations committee. But we, so I don't need to assign anybody additional to that unless somebody wants to take it over. I'm delighted here if anybody does. But we do need someone to take Cheryl's spot on the WNESU board. And I'm wondering if anyone is up for that. Everybody always shows up anyway, but I'm just wondering if we might have a vote. Wow, such enthusiasm for this idea.
I'm already there.
Well, you know, I'm, since I show up and do most of the talking at those meetings anyway, I'm going to appoint myself unless there's, unless there's somebody that would like to object strenuously. And please do. Damn. All right, well, then I guess I will entertain a, I'm sure you don't think, yes, I guess we do, I do by board vote an assignment to the WNESU. So I'd entertain a motion to sentence me to that.
So moved.
Any, any conversation? Do the roll call. Cheryl, no, excuse me. Ha ha, that's funny. Ginger?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Okay. Then that's taken care of. I, I now move, or I don't move, I am entertaining a motion to go into joint session with the Westminster School Board to discuss, to discuss financial matter and a, and the, the town, the district warnings. Can I get a motion to that effect from one of y'all?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I guess we are now in joint session. And off we go. Let me, before we get too far along, it is my hope that in the course of events over the next several months, that we will meet as sort of one big happy family, the Athens and Crafton, when they were technically separate boards, met jointly and met as essentially one entity. And I think that unless there are particular reasons not to do it, that I'd like to make sure that we have something similar set up for these, that we would have two calls to order and then a joint session for all items of mutual interest. And I'm hoping, I don't need a vote to that effect. I'm hoping that is sort of a quay for consensus. So now that we're in the joint meeting, you all have the items here, which are property and debt transfer, drafting a procedure for joint meetings, drafting of warnings, any, anything that's pressing that everybody needs to know about in terms of the two schools, and then we'll slide back out. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Jack, this is Cheryl. There might be an adjustment in that I believe that the boards should take action on the legal warning that each of the three towns.
Right, the, the, there is, or there was supposed to be, I think there still is. When this is completed, there is supposed to be, oh, it's gone. Well, on your agenda, there was originally a, an eight that had you do your, vote on your warning, and that was to be on both of them. So there is an error in the, in the agendas for the two boards, because they're the ones that do that. We'll, we'll work out the language to the extent we need to, and then you'll break back out. I'm telling you what to do. You'll break back out and, and get that taken care of. That would be my expectation. If that's acceptable to my board chair colleague.
Right. And as you know, we have the language for the Westminster warning here. I believe you have the basic language for Athens and Crafton. So what you try to make sense to, certainly.
Right. Now, well, base, it's basically going to be the same, that we're, we're selling you the, we're selling you back the, the two buildings for a dollar and assumption of debt, or just assumption of debt? Oh? Okay, well, walk me through it, because I've been, I've been busy being grandpa this past week, so you're more.
No problem. We, we have the, the language that's been signed off on by the Agency of Education and by the State Board of Education. And the attorney's here.
Okay, well, God bless. Let's, let's hear the language.
Well, let's, let's go through the other things, whatever you, whatever you want to.
Well, we are now, we're really, you know, we are talking with joint session with the WNES, the joint session with the two boards. This, the warning, actually, I've got procedures for joint meetings, which I sort of covered as a fore. So we are at five drafting of warnings. And so that's exchanging information and making sure we've got all of our proverbial ducks in a row. It'd be my assumption, tell me why I'm wrong.
That, actually, that, that sounds fine. And we did at least briefly talk about the proposed procedures that we would meet jointly. So if you're ready, I'll be happy to read the warning for the town of Westminster.
Yep.
Then we can, you can follow along to figure out how to adapt it for Athens and Crafton, because Athens and Crafton should be shorter.
Yep.
So I'm just to read it for the record and I'll hand it to the superintendent for the record as well, and we'll make sure it gets to the proper county, to the clerks that it needs to go. But the warning for the Town School District of Westminster, Vermont, a warning and election on Tuesday, August 31, 2021, is as follows. The inhabitants of the town of Westminster, Vermont, who are legal voters in the Town School District in said town of Westminster, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Town Hall, 3651 US Route 5, Westminster, Vermont, on Tuesday, August 31. are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Town Hall, thirty-six fifty-one U.S. Route Five, Westminster, Vermont, on Tuesday, August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, for the purpose of voting by Australian ballot between the hours of ten a.m., at which time the polls open, and seven p.m., at which time the polls will close, on the following articles. Article one, shall the voters of the Westminster School District approve the agreement negotiated between the Westminster School Board and the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School Board concerning Westminster's withdrawal from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, specifically the transfer at no cost of the Westminster Community Schools and associated debt from school building capital improvements from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District to the Westminster School District. That's article one. Article two, that does not apply to Athens and Grafton. Article two for the voters of Westminster reads as follow. Uh, shall the voters of the Westminster School District approve the addition of two directors to the Westminster School Board, bringing it to a total of five, to serve two-year terms after the initial election? That's the language of, of the warning, as I stated, um, developed by the attorney, signed off on by the attorney, signed off by the, uh, Agency of Education attorney and by the State Board of Education attorney.
All right, thank you for that. Um, my, you know, the, the language is, you know, with, the preamble is what we always do, or at least what we're always supposed to do. Um, my amendments for that for Athens and Grafton would obviously be that, you know, substitute Athens and Grafton and flip the language in terms of, uh, I convey the, uh, convey the properties and, and I believe we have to have the street addresses and I've got the street address for three oh one School Street in, in Westminster. I don't, and I'm hoping one of you two guys, one of you, three of you knows the street address, uh, for the West West FY building. Uh, do you, by any chance, or we just can put it in as, uh, West West, uh, road or street or whatever it is?
Right, Jack, I, again, based on the attorney's counsel to us, we actually don't even need to have that in here, it's just.
Okay. I, I'd seen something either from Sean or Larry about that, so I'd, I'd went off to try to find it and.
But we do need, we do need the polling, the polling address for the people of each town. We don't need address.
Hi, Jack, could I just say a word? This is David Major.
Yep.
Um, I, when, just before I came here, I printed out this, uh, warning, uh, from the, for the town of Westminster, suggested warning from council.
Yep.
There were two other attachments in that same email with suggested warnings for Athens and for Grafton that essentially reflect this, this same and except having the right addresses and towns and so on in there and not having the business about the, um, school, the, the increase in school, the number of school directors for Westminster. So this, the article two. So I think, especially if we just pull up our emails from, uh, Sean, Tully, we could probably pick, pick that up, uh, without having to reinvent the, what the warnings should read for Athens and Grafton.
That would be my preference and I will tell my colleagues that with the loss of, um, of Cheryl and her replacement, we, you know, we can noodle along until, uh, next July with our board and its current configuration, obviously, when, uh, when our two, when all of our Westminster folks are no longer with us, uh, we will probably want to reconfigure our board, but I think the time for that would be on the, uh, on the March town meeting and that'll give us enough time to figure out if we want a six-person board, a five-person board, uh, if we want to go back to, we, because we need to find out, for example, um, whether or not we need to make adjustments because of population differences, if we want to have individual town districts, all that good stuff. And, uh, to be honest with you, I'm not prepared to have that conversation, but I thought we would, we, we could take the next couple of months and, and finalize our, our view on that. If that's acceptable to everybody, I just, you know, I was originally eager to get that done and realized that was pushing it more than we could. Um, so yeah, uh, long story short, uh, David, I'm, since you have the language for what Grafton and Athens ought to do when it comes to our time, I'm going to have you read it, uh, so that we can formally approve it. Does that seem reasonable? Or would, or can, do you want to read it now just for fun?
Jack, we, we, we have the language, um, that the Westminster School Board, um, would take action on.
Yeah.
This is pulling up the language for Athens and, and Grafton.
Okay, great, that'll, just as long as somebody's got it so that we can do that. Um, in terms of the framework of all this, I need to ask my, um, my unified district colleagues if this feels okay with you all.
Sounds logical to me. Sounds logical to me, too.
Uh, uh, Elise, do you want to sandbag your Westminster, uh, your Westminster colleagues and say, no, this is terrible and I don't want to do it?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I, I asked if you, uh, if you have, if you thought as, uh, in your view, was this a, uh, inappropriate, uh, process?
I believe so, yeah.
Uh, I was trying to make a lame joke, but, uh, that's a lot of my. The, um, uh, Jessa, what say you? Are you okay with this going, as we're going forward? Is there any questions you got?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Um, is, um, is Kim on? Because this is, some of this lands on her. She's still with us? Yes. Hi, Kim, you, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, um, since this is, this outside of getting the warning together, this means you, uh, and Doreen get, you know, get to do all the work. Are you okay with this as a process? Are there any issues we're not thinking of?
No, no, I haven't thought of any issues. Um, our address, though, is one seventeen Main Street. We are going to hold it in our Town Hall upstairs and then I can bring voting down for those who can't make it up the stairs since we yet have an elevator.
All right, then, uh, then when we get to that spot, we'll do that. What I'm going to suggest to my colleagues in the interest of expediting this is we're going to agree to language, it might be a little on the vague side, when we get to, uh, getting this printed up, we'll make sure that everybody's, that we have the exact language from Chris and then I'll run over to all your houses and get it signed or we'll do this on a, uh, Panda Docs thing as we've done in the past. So it'll be one of those two and hopefully we'll be true to the sentiment of everybody. Um, I see, I see, uh, David's holding up something and looking very meaningful. Is that what we're talking, is that our material?
You know, we're still trying to find the, the Athens and Grafton warnings. Do you know what day that Sean sent them? It was in the last couple of, a couple of weeks, I think, but, uh, yeah, it was.
It's, it's really the, the same language, um, for article one, just substituting, uh, to the voters of Athens, so, no, but Wyndham.
We're.
East Union, yeah, right in the, in the, in the top paragraph just has to do with what Kim was just saying, the paragraph that's appropriate to Grafton or the paragraph that's appropriate to Athens.
Yeah, with my colleagues' indulgence, when we come out, what I'm going to suggest is that, uh, a member of my board may want to submit the following, that, that, uh, the, uh, Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District approves the warning as drafted by Chairman Jack Prior and Chris Pratt and hopefully we'll do it right and we'll get it all to you and hopefully it'll, uh, reflect your sentiments. It's a little sloppy, but I think that will work for our purposes. Uh, is, uh, every, go ahead. Yes.
Can I interrupt again?
Oh, yeah.
I just, uh, the Westminster vote has to happen, uh, on August thirty-one.
Right.
The Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District has to happen then as well.
Right.
In order to meet, uh, deadlines imposed on us by the State Board of Education.
Right.
And that means that in order to have that properly worn and be able to get into the, the newspapers, um, we need to, uh, we, we need to finish this, uh, business this evening and be able to, to get the word out.
I, I, I think we can do all of that, but the specific text, no, is forty days is what we've got and, uh, and given the date of this, uh, if we get it done in the ne, if, if the, if our colleagues can get it done in the next day or so, and I'm assuming we will, we'll have that language distributed. We're getting the authorization tonight. Uh, we'll have the language tidied up probably tomorrow morning and, uh, and be able to submit it within the forty-day window. And I think that'll get us where we need to be. Uh, obviously, this is a case where, um, a little untidiness on my part is regrettable, but it's kind of how it worked. I, and we'll pledge not to do that again.
I have it, David.
You don't have it, no.
Thanks.
Jack?
Yeah. Yes, Lynn?
Can we word it in such that the Athens warning and the Grafton warning will be taken from the Westminster warning and just the addresses would be switched?
Effectively, that's what it is and the, you know, they convey to and convey from changes and, you know, that, and that's pretty much it. Uh, yeah, and like I said, I, I don't, this seems fairly, you know.
It seemed like it said just what needed to be said for all three towns, you just had to plug in the right.
We're, we're, we're changing nouns.
I, I can, I can read what I believe is the, the motion.
I, I think that would be lovely and I invite you to do that.
Okay, so it would read, it would be a, a one article, uh, quote, and so it would be article one, shall the voters of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District
And, yeah.
the agreement negotiated between the Westminster School Board and the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School Board concerning Westminster's withdrawal from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, specifically the transfer at no cost of the Westminster Community Schools and associated debt from the school building capital improvements from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District to the Westminster School.
I would, I would amend that. I think it should be, shall the bonus of action happen to Grafton.
Uh, yeah, I, I think so too, because other, because you're not, because the town of Westminster is not going to vote on this agreement. It's going to be I guess the two, two remaining towns, uh, and I'd, uh, tweak that if I, if I press my desk.
Right.
All right, so that is, that is the working understanding of what this, uh, warning will say. And like I said, we'll get together with Chris tomorrow and, and nail it down, circulate it and get it, uh, get it warned like, uh, quick as a bunny. So, I mean, uh, distribute it. But we're warning it tonight, we're distributing it tomorrow. All right, um, that's all I've got. Now, I did put on the, uh, joint meeting, um, the possibility of discussing any pressing school items that needed to be done. Um, I'm getting the sense that there aren't any, but, uh, Chris, is there anything everybody needs to know about, uh, before we go back into our individual meetings?
Uh, no, there's nothing on my end. Um, I said a lot, some, right now, in, in the SU level, you have principals who are trying to get some well-deserved time off.
We hate that.
Summer programs are well underway. We've got over twenty-five students SU-wide and, uh, we're just, um, getting ready for all the students in the faculty staff in the fall, so we'll have more updates for all the boards as the, uh, year gets closer and closer.
All right, um, I, um, I did notice that the playground had been tweaked up in, uh, Grafton, the, the, the physical structure is needs some work, didn't, haven't gotten over to Westminster and didn't know if the, uh, if that area had been relandscaped or not and was going to ask you about that.
Um, I wouldn't, I haven't had a chance to, uh, get around to all the schools in that capacity yet.
All right.
But that's something that, um, you could query the principal on.
Yeah, if you, uh, if, if maybe one of you, one of my Westminster colleagues wants to drive by and kind of give us a, uh, and as a quick assessment in the next little bit, that'd be nice for the next meeting. Um, then I guess.
Jack, excuse me, this is Flora.
Hi, Flora.
Hi, um, so the playgrounds, um, they were, um, audited and that's why they're getting them fixed. Um, they're working on each one individually, uh, and there is, um, certain parts that are, um, being ordered so I could be in compliance with BISBID's, um, review. So, um, hopefully by September, before, um, the kiddos come back to school, everything should be ready, but, uh, Rick Schuman is working with that and right now, um, Jen DeVal as well.
Okay, um, Flora, while I've got you, um, now we've been advised and, uh, uh, my colleague Cheryl has been at pains to, uh, be clear that we don't need exact numbers on the conveyance of debt for purposes this evening. Uh, I am anticipating and I will, uh, caucus with you all, that we will probably want to have either one or two, uh, informational meetings, not that I'm anticipating of, you know, a, a ton of people asking questions prior to the, uh, to the actual vote, but when that comes up, I would like to have the numbers available and also be able to let, uh, the, uh, Grafton News, Athenian and, uh, Westminster Gazette know what they are, so we can get that information to people. So, uh, if, uh, in the next, sometime early next week, we can just nail that down so we can get something, uh, in those esteemed publications between now and those votes, I think would be good.
Okay, uh, so if you want, just give me a call tomorrow, I'll be in the office and then we could just, um, go over exactly everything you need. So that way we can have it ready for you, um, early next week.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it might be a team call for my co, for my chair of the other, uh, in, now independent school board. Uh, so, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, hearing no other business before this joint committee, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn so people can go and have their, uh, amend their agendas to include approval of their respective, uh, warnings. Um, so I'm listening for a mo, motion to adjourn and do, to do that.
Go to adjourn.
I see an enthusiastic arm up. Uh, any objections? And without objection, I'll, uh, in my capacity as unelected and self-assumed, uh, chair of this collective meeting, uh, know, you like that, uh, then I, I declare us, um, adjourned and, uh, Cheryl, you get to go first.
All right, I will before adjourned before the Westminster School Board adjourns, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the language of the warning, uh, that has been presented this evening to, uh, notify the voters of this election, on August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one. We read it previously, I'm not sure if we can reread it. Any, is there a motion?
Uh, for, for David, David, you wrote it, would say, move.
Uh, sure, I'll move. The, these, the warning, uh, as written, um, so I do have something I want to discuss.
Okay, so, um, the motion, I think that's on the floor, to approve the warning as written, a discussion.
I, uh, am wondering whether in article two, which reads, shall the voters of Westminster School District approve the addition of two directors to the Westminster School Board, by total, to serve two-year terms after the initial election? Um, should we say when that initial election? So it could read, to serve two-year terms after the initial election in March of twenty-twenty-two? Or it could read, uh, I have another sentence saying the initial election will take place at town meeting, uh, uh, in March of 2022."
Because it sort of begs the question, if somebody's just reading as written, you'd say, well, am I supposed to go now? Am I supposed to spread any agenda? Or, or is it something, nothing in the pictures? Start right there.
And I suggest that we amend Article Two, subject to legal review, and take action to approve it with that modification this evening. It would need then to be reviewed and officially modified before we we will take action, sign it today. We wouldn't have to have it before we were here. It's there, sir. It needs to be fully signed off on, uh, in, in official language, so getting the town board with the Westminster Board, uh, 27th, it's a way of there to do that. So, uh, with the amendment to specify the date of that initial election.
Well, we haven't specified yet. Should we, uh, to be elected at next town meeting?
Well, the problem with that is there may be, um, a town meeting, a special town meeting, uh, to deal with some equipment issues.
Which may be the town?
Next week.
So there's four of them.
I'm not sure it's four of them. I think it may be a, like the other school board positions in Australia and Melbourne. At, at the first Tuesday in March, uh, at the town hall or where the election is held. Following the town, following, pretty personal.
So what if the motion would have proven concept, uh, the passing of this motion tonight would, uh, request that we get the language clarified by the local council to assist us in specifying the wording next year. But we want that for-
To-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Outside it might pop in. I actually think that the, uh, that having some language explaining that they're not electing members to, uh, at your next meeting, they're making, they're putting the framework together to make them elected and, uh, both Charlie and, uh, and David's point on that, I thought was a reasonable one. I, I, I can't imagine any council in America that would find that inclusion objectionable. Uh, I, I, I think you'll be, I, I'd be stunned if that's not going to be okay.
Yeah, my, my amendment, subject to, uh, subject to advice by council, is, um, that the word, that the wording of the Article Two would have the existing wording, followed by the initial election will take place, uh, at town meeting in March of 2022.
Okay, that makes the next thing.
I think regularly scheduled work better for you, gentlemen.
Okay, regularly scheduled.
Because, because otherwise Russ may say, well, maybe we want to have a meeting in April, you know, and we, we don't want that.
So maybe the proposal, the motion has been, been, uh, already been taken action. Any condition discussion? So all those in favor?
All right.
Okay. So with that, Jack, it's back to you. I know, well, let me see, um, is there any other business to come before the Westminster School Board? You may have some issues. So I don't think we're quite ready to adjourn. Why don't you go ahead and take this action and then we'll see if we have any?
All right, um, okay, colleagues of the, uh, Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, we are resumed back in session for, uh, and, um, I am asking the board to, uh, allow us to now amend the agenda to include the approval of, uh, the warning being discussed this evening. Is that, without objection? Uh, so we are on to approving the warning. Um, David, uh, do you, either you or, um, or Chris want to take a spin at, uh, putting words in our mouth about what the warning is?
I could read what I, uh, what, what I think that the, uh, council, uh, is suggesting you have as the article.
All right, just for the record and the, uh, I'll be entertaining a motion to have, uh, to approve the warning of being drafted by Mr. Breyer in conjunction with Mr. Pratt, who will have you all sign subsequently. So when the time comes, go, go, go forth and orate, um.
Okay, uh, "Shall the voters of Athens and Grafton approve the agreement negotiated between the Westminster School Board and the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School Board concerning Westminster's withdrawal Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District specifically to transfer at no cost of the Westminster Community Schools and associated debt from the school building capital improvements from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District to the Westminster School District."
I think that'll, that, I, I think that'll work. Uh, any, uh, any thoughts, comment from my colleagues?
I like the sounds of it. I like having the actual towns mentioned in there. I think that sounds much better.
Yep, um, Ginger, how about you?
I agree with what Lynn just said. I think having the two towns listed is good.
All right, uh, Jessa, are you still here? Not seeing you on my little screen here. Jessa, are you there?
I am, sorry.
Uh, yeah, all right, all right, uh, does this all sound okay?
Yeah.
All right, um, Elise, uh, though you don't have a vote, you're all, you're all good with this? Stunned into silence.
I'm fine. I, it, that's fine with me, yep.
All righty, um, then I'll entertain a motion to that, I think, I think we attended, entertained a motion to that effect. Let me do the roll call. Um, Ginger?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
All right, the motion is adopted and, um, we, I'm going to switch back to Cheryl.
Let me just see if I have any director's comments over here. Charlie, your first meeting is, uh,
I think.
Elected.
The wheels are about to be, it's not a good idea.
Well, well said. I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we are in this position at this point after quite a long, uh, adventure or detour into, uh, Act 46 minutes.
And, and I guess I would add, I would ask, uh, our council people, our voters, continue patience with this. The Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District needs to take responsibility to manage all the affairs as board members of the school, working well within the supervisory union. The Westminster School Board is happy to be a part of it, understanding that our role is not only in, in effect until July, but at the same time, we are actively concerned and eager to, to be constructive in parts of this continuing process. So thanks to everybody for your patience and at the same time, know that things move on well. Things are, are fun here. We're just in the process of trying to bring, uh, the school-related activities even closer to the forefront.
All right. And it's time for the, uh, for the unified district members to, uh, to, for director's comments from you all. Uh, Ginger, anything?
I mean, no, I'm just happy the way things are working out. Seems like we're moving in the right direction.
Winn?
I just wanted to say thank you to Westminster folks. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Jessa?
Um, no, I don't have any particular comments. I'm just hoping we don't have another timeline fiasco with getting all the warnings worded and posted and all that, because we've run into that before.
And it's the meeting tonight. Thank you, Jessa. Elise?
Um, hi, um, well, I'm, I'm very happy to be part of this organization and all of you and, uh, looking forward to moving ahead. That's it.
And I get to close, I, you know, I, I've said to people right along, I had no doubt how this was going to land at the end of the day and uh, it sounded delusional and maybe it was, but, uh, I had no doubt that we would be able to affect this and restore the, uh, a version of the status quo ante and including that our, uh, boards would meet collegially for, uh, for a stretch. It worked well before. Uh, we may have to find ways to plot to do this more often, even after next July, who knows? Thank you all. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the, from our board.
So moved.
Uh, any objections? Then we are adjourned.